Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the public meeting for the proposed fire territory for the Town of Danville Centaur Township. My name's Rick Duncan, I'm your Fire Chief. It's my honor to be here tonight. First up is Jeff Bellamy, Attorney at Law, Thrasher, Busman, and Vocal PC.
Good evening. As Chief said, I'm Jeff Bellamy. I'm the Attorney for Centaur Township, and I've been asked to assist on the protocol of this process of going through territory meetings. I am very, very, very glad to be with you indoors this evening. It seems very emphatic to come to a fire territory meeting. Our boiler was out today, and our boiler was out all day long at the office. So it was a lovely 64 degrees in my office all day, and you start to find out that your fingers don't like to type as much whenever it's cold all day long. I have worked on numerous fire territories, fire districts, fire collaborations. I've had the privilege of working with Danville and Centaur Township for several years on their contractual collaboration, and happy to be assisting them through this process. This is one of four different territory collaborations I'm involved with that's being considered what I call this territory season. It is really the very common way units are looking to get together and find ways to collaborate without merging and work together on solving what I call, and though if you start saying this around, people will look at you crazy, because it's just my term, the riddle of fire, figuring out the riddle of how to adequately get staffed and trained individuals out to serve property and people when there's a need. So, we're gonna rock out a little now. Put a little reverb on that. Thank you. So, what we're here for is a presentation in a public hearing on the possibility of the two units, Centaur Township and the Town of Danville, joining together and creating fire territory. And we do that through four sessions. Three public hearings and one public meeting. We are at public hearing number two. The next public hearing, and final public hearing, is gonna be March 5th, same time, but over at the Royal Theater on the square. We will have the fourth session, which will not be a public hearing on the territory, but a meeting for these two units to ask me any questions, ask Chief any questions, make comments, make statements, ask each other anything they want to, or talk to REED Financial Group on any fiscal issues they want addressed. But we will not hear any further public comment at that time. It's time for you guys to get any questions answered, make your statements you want to make. If you then decide to make motions, and those motions pass for both groups in the affirmative, then we'll have a very, very short public hearing solely on the Equipment Replacement Fund, and that's it. If we don't approve the territory, there's nothing to talk about with the Equipment Replacement Fund. So, unless either, or Chair or President object, I notice you both have your quorum present. Is there any reason why we can't call the meeting to order of both groups? Let the record reflect, I have two head shakes from our Chair people, so we'll count that as no objection. So what's territory? Indiana Code permits existing local units to enter into a contract called an interlocal agreement to provide fire or EMS together, and/or EMS together, rather than as separate units. Right now, all of our participants are operating under a prior collaborative contract to cooperate on fire, but it doesn't have the same fiscal flexibility or oversight that joining a territory would create. A lot of people, including me, when I started, would throw out the term "fire district." This is not a fire district. A fire district is an entity that's created by the commissioners, and it can be created on their own because they think it's necessary, or you can have a landowner petition to get them to consider it. If you did that, your fire district would be its completely owned entity, and it would have fire trustees or fire commissioners, depending on the term, appointed by the county commissioners, and those would not be answerable or electable by anyone that's in those particular jurisdictions. They would answer only to the commissioners. Once you join a fire district, or once a fire district's created, it can often be difficult to unwind it. The mechanisms for doing so are a little murky in the code. You have to go back to the commissioners. Essentially, all roads run through the commissioners on that. So what, why this is different really, is a territory is locally controlled by the participants, and it would be operated by an executive board, and the board would be formed by individuals that populate those two boards. So each unit would have what I would just call colloquialism, skin in the game. Plus, there would be some answer or some connectivity to the voter and taxpayer without necessarily running through the commissioners. What our process is tonight, and again, on the 5th, is to present all the interested residents of the participating units about the need for expanding and greater support for the fire service, really what some of our limits are right now. I can say certainly from the township side that it is really exhausted about every opportunity it can to get revenue for the fire service. We have adjusted the QM fund a couple of years ago, and that's about it. There's not a lot more that that unit can do. And so, one of the things this process does is it allows the two units to reset their fire levy and be able to provide enough resources to put on an adequate fire service. Chief Duncan will talk about a little bit on that issue, and so will his staff, and then we'll have REED Financial talk about that a little bit too. So our meeting directions, well, we'll talk a little bit too. The executive board of the territory, if it is approved, it'll be responsible for addressing how the department deals with first response, including fire and EMS, equipment planning, debts and bonds. There's no debt plan right now, there are no bonds planned right now. There might be some needed someday in the future. Education, community outreach, fire code inspection, enforcement, department personnel and discipline, fundraising grants, real estate planning, working on ISO ratings. ISO ratings are critical to what your inputs are for what you get charged on your fire insurance. And the two biggest inputs for that are the quality and level of service of your fire department and water supply. That's A, B, and then public outreach is way down here. So, these are all real critical in the outputs of what you have to pay in your fire insurance. So our meeting direction is the citizens and council and township board members in attendance are gonna hear two main presentations. One to be presented by Fire Chief Rick Duncan and his staff concerning the need for the territory and the status of the department, service, equipment, expected outcomes, what you can expect to receive as a result of if this is approved. And the second presentation are going to be from the REED Financial Group. They're gonna talk to us about property tax impacts, income tax impacts, budgeting, general financial impacts. And you may ask, well Jeff, why? Why are we doing it that way? Why are those the two items that are being presented? Very simple. The Indiana Fire Territory Code requires there be a presentation on those type of items with a three-year forecast presented to everyone that's in attendance. If you're interested in these materials, or you wanna review them on your own, we have a QR code on the table, and you can click on that QR code and download those items. Or if you're not as savvy as QR codes, maybe like me, and you just wanna leave an email or something for Chief or others, we'll get you those sent out after the session. Also too, this is gonna be the exact same material essentially that we presented at the first session. It's also gonna be the same material, other than questions, that we are gonna present at the third session. So this is a one-act play. We do three times. It's not a three-act play where you get to come to the third session and find out who shot JR. That's a very dated reference. The fourth session though, and this is what will be a little anticlimactic tonight, you can hear these materials, and once Q and A ends, we'll journey go home. And you will not know tonight what these individuals are gonna do, because their decision will come at the final session. And so that's when they will make their decision, at the fourth session. If everyone agrees to go forward, then we'll go forward with communicating with the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance about whether or not they believe we followed the process correctly, and whether or not they will reset the levy. So typically, they make their decisions in June or July, so that's when we'll know if the DLGF likes what we've done. I'm a big believer that this is a process to get information out to the public. Sometimes if you're like me, you'll leave a meeting, you think, oh, I wish I'd have answered this, I wish I'd have thought of that. You haven't missed your shot. You can drop an email into the trustee's office, you can drop an email into the fire department, and we will try to push and answer back out to you, get it to the right person and get you that information. Or you can come by the third session. But we wanna get your questions answered in a way that tries to give you the information that satisfies what you wanna know. That's all I have right now. I'm gonna stick around answering your questions through the evening on procedure, legal issues, but Chief Duncan's gonna take over and take us through the department presentation.
Thanks Jeff. So, some of you don't know me, but I can tend to ramble on, so I do have a prepared speech tonight, so we can keep this moving. First of all, I wanna say thanks to the Parks Director, Assistant Town Manager Will Lacy and his staff for setting all this up. I wanna say thank Police Chief Jim and his people for being here tonight. I'd also like to thank our Community Engagement Coordinator Madison Henderson. She's a big part of this in our social media, she handles all that for the fire department. Trustee Miller from Washington Township, appreciate you coming out and showing your support tonight. Again, I'm your Fire Chief Rick Duncan. I stand before you tonight, highlight an urgent issue facing Centaur Township and the Town of Danville, the critical need for additional firefighters in our fire department. When I took this job 19 months ago, we were already critically behind. Our community has grown an average of 9% in the last three years, and the fire department has not. In the proposed 2025 budget, we were unable to secure enough funding necessary to properly expand our firefighter workforce, and this is jeopardizing the safety of our community. We have an aging fleet. We currently operate seven vehicles that are well past their lifespan, and that presents an additional safety issue. Without these additional resources, our fire department will continue to brown out Station 191, meaning that during times of high demand, that station will be forced to close temporarily due to insufficient personnel. This is not just logistical challenge, it's a matter of life and death. As our community grows, so do the demands placed on the fire service. We rely on our firefighters to be there in our moments of our greatest needs, whether it's fighting a fire, responding to medical emergencies, or protecting our property and lives. Without the proper funding for additional staffing, we are putting the safety of everyone in this community at risk. I urge you to recognize the gravity of this situation. The well-being of Centaur Township and the Town of Danville depends on a fully-staffed, fully-capable fire department. The only financial fix for this problem is a fire territory. We cannot afford to leave our stations, our firefighters, and our community vulnerable. It is time to invest in our future, ensure the protection of our families, and provide our dedicated firefighters with the support they deserve. Again, I'm honored to be your Fire Chief, and thank you for attending tonight. Next up, Deputy Chief Alex Brand is gonna take you through all the really, really good meat and potatoes of this. Chief Brand?
Alex Brand, Deputy Chief of Operations. Put together a quick presentation for you, but what I wanna do is I wanna start with history. We're gonna go all the way back into the 1800s, we're gonna go to every year, so we should be outta here at least by midnight. Just kidding. Give me 15 minutes, I'll give you a really quick overview of our fire territory, of what we're hoping for and what we're proposing. In 1849 is the first earliest documented incident within Danville Centaur Township area. 1869, the fire department was actually established, which is the oldest, obviously, department within Hendricks County. 1878, first fire chief was appointed. In 1900, the town purchased a hose cart, had 400 feet of hose, and it was drawn by hand. Obviously, we didn't have motorized vehicles back in the day, it was a hand cart, and they used to come to the firehouse, they'd grab it, and they would run to the fire. Today's terminology, we call it a fire run. It's all based, still from the 1800s. We still use the same terminology from back in the day. In 1930, 13, we purchased a Model T fire truck. In 1938, we had 138 people petition to go ahead and sign for a new fire truck, and that fire truck was $3,000. Imagine the shock of that, back in 1938. In 1953, a new pumper was also purchased for the amount of $17,000. I want you to look at the coalition between 1938 and 1953. Anybody know what that increase was price-wise in their head? 17.46%. We'll come back and visit this. And then today, we're attempting to continue to make history for our department and our organization. Operational readiness, with the decrease in volunteer firefighters across the United States, in 2020 reached an all-new low as coal volumes tripled. This is according to the National Volunteer Fire Council. Additional full-time people is needed to fill these gaps. We currently utilize part-time individuals or part-time staff. Again, those numbers are dwindling down. And we're also gonna get into a little bit of lacking of the funding of equipment replacement. So OSHA mandates. We look at the two-in, two-out rule. Everything we do in firefighting is in teams. If two people go in, I need two people outside. If one person goes in with air, I need a second person there. The reason is if we get in trouble, we have that backup. It's no different than any other sport. If you look at sports, how teams play. So respiratory protection standards, again, anytime we're inside, we have to have one monitoring each other. If somebody goes down, we can immediately grab them, get them out of that immediately dangerous, life-hazarding situation. NFPA 1710, this is the one thing I wanna talk a little bit about, and that is the staffing of our apparatus. Staffing requires apparatus as trained firefighters eight minutes to the fire scene. 17 standard also, 1710 standard also, is the efficiency of emergency operations. Currently, today, we operate six firefighters. Our average response time is eight minutes and 56 seconds. So when you look at the eight minutes and 56 seconds, that's not a good time. We need to be under the eight minutes. The only way to do that is with more people, more equipment, more infrastructure. We cover a large area. I wanna talk about functional fire ground positions. These positions are everything that you need to operate on a fire ground. So you have an incident commander, that's usually one person that's in charge of that scene, they run everything, they're the person that hits control, they're the ones that have market working, they're the person that requests more resources if needed. You have an engine. Usually, we want four people on that engine. One has to pump, or drive to the fire truck, drive it to the scene. They're gonna operate the fire pump, and two people are gonna operate the hose. What we like is three. NFPA also shows that five, four to five people on a fire engine reduces that risk of injury. Ladder operations is the same. We have one ladder operator, three people doing a search, a second engine, a backup hose, and a medic unit, for a total of 15. Again, I wanna reiterate, right now we have six. If somebody calls in sick, we have five. We do use mutual aid. Mutual aid's a big increase for us. We're between 28 and 35%, where we have mutual aid coming to assist. However, we need to be ready with our manpower. Our deployment of forces, when we start looking at our goals, so everything that we look at is data-driven. I started here in December, and for the last three months, all I have done is go blind, looking at a computer screen, crunching data, looking at numbers, looking at all the statistics, every run that we've done, everywhere that we've been. So when we start forecasting, NFPA also puts out, for every 1,000 people, that firefighter ratio is 1.87. So when we look at 2025, we're attempting for eight, all the way to 2029. So I know Mr. Bellamy just said that we try for a three-year, we went all the way out to five years. In 2029, we shouldn't have 19 people on shift. We start looking at capital improvements, so you have a primary, and then you have a backup. So we have our primary piece of apparatus, that's our fire trucks. Those are the ones we run every single day. Well, eventually, just like any vehicle, the fleet gets older. As fleet gets older, what happens to the price? The cost of operation of that vehicle tends to go up. So we go in for a simple oil change, and come out 20,000 in debt because they found kingpins, or a transmission issue, or something else. So, the older the vehicle, obviously. So when we look at our primary engines, we have set a 10-year with a reserve in five to be replaced in 15, ladder is 15, replaced in 20, so on and so forth. As we look at our current apparatus today, these are our fire engines, you'll see they go in red, yellow, and green. The red is an immediate replacement. We have right now, one vehicle that is 32 years old. Going down to our medic trucks and our ambulances, those are eight and nine years old, and then our Engine 192, you'll see that's in green. So that's a good truck, because that's already still good. Except for the unfortunate part, is in the next 365 days, that turns to yellow. So I wanna talk about is, I'll go back just a second, when we look at the age of the fleet, apparatus manufacturing timelines, and you'll see some of these pictures as an example of this right here. These are all pieces of apparatus that are currently available. I wanna say it's their demo trucks, so they're spec, but they're not to our specs. Unlike a vehicle, or unlike your car, you just go to a dealership and you pick out what you want, it's right there. Fire trucks and medic trucks are completely different. Everything is custom-made. They have the basics, and then you have to add the rest. According to the apparatus manufacturers right now, both Pierce and E1, those timelines to build those trucks are between 24 and 45 months from start to finish. So now you're at two years to three to possibly four years, depending on the type of vehicle you buy. When you start looking at it, back in 2020, it crippled the economy. We're not even gonna start with the 2020 stuff again. But now, it's no longer a demand or a supply issue, now it's a demand issue. So what was taking place was now that the production started ramping back up, now manufacturers are telling us, hey, I can't do that for two or three years before we can get to it, or you're looking at 48 months before I can get you your fire engine. Well, in my operational plan, in three years, I should be getting another engine. So what am I doing? Now I'm ordering two. So now when you start looking across the board at apparatus manufacturers, you'll start seeing not just one being ordered, but two, three, four, and five. Because they know that's gonna go, come down the road. So now, and again, it's a demand issue. There are options, and Mr. Bellamy just hit on it just for a very quick second, and that was the Equipment Replacement Fund. So there are options of lease, there's options to purchase. The difference is when that fund is set up, it'll be able to utilize that money toward the purchase of apparatus without spending all of our money at once. What I mean by spending all the money at once, so right now, when we start looking at the manufacturer's cost, so again, these stats are exactly from the manufacturers, the two that I just mentioned, it's a 45% increase. You remember what happened in 1938, 1953? If you remember that increase, 17.46. Now we're at 45% increase, which breaks down to 11.25 per year. So with three pieces of equipment, the ones that I had shown on the screen there, that's You take that 11.25%, and we add that for five years. If we continue to wait, and we continue to not move forward, our new price is gonna increase with that end of five years, $2,074,000. We're gonna increase. The longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be. This isn't new today. This happened in 1938 to 1953. Our times are still the same. Just our dollar amounts a lot more. When we start looking at capital improvements or deciding the future stations, we use something called heat mapping. Every incident that we have, I track with longitude latitude. It puts a little dot on a map. I can go in and I can see where the growth is. We can see where incidents are. I've been back five years, as far back as I can go, for tracking and for data. And this will allow us to see where our future fire stations need to be. When you look at it on a map, I'll just tell you here, here's an example. So when we start looking in proper Town Danville, in this area right here, obviously, being the main bulk of city square, we have all of this to the east, and it is continuing to grow. When we start looking to the west, we're getting a little bit of growth. So again, a lot of people, I've heard some comments, and I've spoken with quite a few people, which are really, really good questions, they see the west, they're like, the west is growing, the west is growing. What we don't see is between Main Street 100 and 200, in this general area, that area is completely booming. We're going that way a lot. And this is just in 2024. I think when you see the 2025 overlay, which will start doing overlays, you'll start seeing that, again, increase. So basically, the city's coming toward us. It's coming from the east, it's moving west. So basic summary, staffing levels needed. I just wanna reiterate, it's a very specific order that we need. We need personnel, then I need fire apparatus, and then I need fire stations. I'm not asking for everything at once. What I'm asking for is I have to get personnel. I have to get people, I have to get the equipment in service, and then we can move forward, and we can start that growth. The apparatus needs, those are gonna come with that growth, and again, later down the road's the future for the fire stations. All the resource information is gonna be in that QR code, this is where all the data came from, and then all the data that we use in-house. So I wanna take the time to say thank you, I appreciate the opportunity, and I'll talk to you soon.
Next up is REED Financial, that's who we engaged to do this study, so we can look at the actual financial impact that it has on each and every resident of both Centaur Township and the Town of Danville proper. So they're gonna come up and give you their numbers, explain why things are, and then after that, we'll have a Q and A session.
Thanks Chief. My name is Reagan Ekins with REED. Also have Mickey Bell with us as well. We're gonna, we're gonna talk through some of the financial pieces. First, I wanna talk about the budget levy and rate, how we came about getting our numbers. First two things to clarify is we have two funds when we establish a fire territory. The Fire General Fund, that's where all of our operational costs come from, our salaries, benefits, supplies, all the other services come from that. And then the Equipment Replacement Fund, which has been mentioned several times, that's a rate-driven fund, and that's where our capital comes from. The budgets you see here were provided by the fire department. Once we have those, we back into how much levy we need. One of the perks of establishing a fire territory is we get to set our levy in the first year. So we're, we need about a $6.5 million property tax levy in the first year to fund that budget. Once we get the levy that we need, then we can use the AVs and get a tax rate. So we'll see, for the General Fund, we're estimating about a 50 cent tax rate. The Equipment Replacement Fund is about 3 and 1/3 cents, and that is restricted The Equipment Replacement Fund is about 3 and 1/3 cents, and that is restricted to that 3 and 1/3. So it will, it will never change. Once it's established, it stays, stays there. And one thing that is important to note, both Center Township and Towneville currently have a fire rate, so this 53 cents is not a brand-new rate. I think Center Township's rate currently is around 47 cents, something close to that. So that 47 cents goes away, the 53 cents comes in, and then Towneville's is somewhere between 15 and 20 cents. So that part goes away, and then the 53 cents gets added. Let's talk about some impacts. The first set of impacts will be to the taxpayer. All these charts are, if you scan the QR code, all these should be there. If you can't see them, great. Top chart here, that's our monthly impact, and the bottom chart is the yearly impact. The part in blue, that's our 1 percent tax base, your residential properties. And just for an example, if, if your home is worth $100,000 in the town of Towneville, we're projecting about a 9.89 cents tax increase per month, or $118 for the year. And if you notice, once we get to $250,000, those, those homes are at a cap already, so you will not see an increase on your tax bill due to the fire territory. The, the yellow bunch, that's agriculture or the 2 percent tax, tax base, they are already capped, so there will not be any change for them. And then the green at the bottom, that's for commercial properties, your 3 percent tax rate, tax base, and they will see an impact. So just, just for reference, let's say you have a 300,000 commercial property in the town of Towneville, you would see about a $97 impact per month, or $1,100 impact per Scrolling down, circuit breaker impacts. A circuit breaker is the amount of property tax that we do not collect. So these impacts are based solely on the projected tax rate of the fire territory expansion. The two things that I want to point out here, Center Township's circuit breaker in 2024, that's, it was 38,000. Since they are losing their fire, they will not have a property tax levy just for Center Township, so they will not have a circuit breaker impact if the fire territory gets established. And then for Towneville Civil Town that's highlighted, if they are the providing unit, they would then get that General Fund and Equipment Replacement Fund, that would be a part of their yearly budgeting process, so they would see more of a, an impact there. It's, it's a little over $400,000. There are some other units in there that you want to look at. Again, if you scan the QR code, you, you should be able to look at that in more detail. Scrolling down to the local income tax impacts, first we'll talk about certified shares. Income taxes will not go directly to the fire territory. It'll be received by the participating units. There's a fire territory adjustment that allocates part of the fire territory levy back to all participating units. So in this case, it would be Center Township and Towneville Civil Town, which are highlighted. The way income tax works, it goes kind of a year delayed in the collection process. So if this territory were established in 2026, we wouldn't see this effect until 2027. One thing that I do want to mention is, is our calculations here are based on a 5 percent total lit growth for the county. Historically, we've seen 9, 10, 12 percent growth, so we're, we're trying to be conservative. But just for an example here, in 2025, Towneville Civil Town received 1.6 and 386, so just around $2 million in certified shares. If the fire territory goes through in 2027, they would receive a little under $3 million. So you'll see an increase to Towneville Civil Town of about 882,000, and Center Township would receive about $1 million more in lit certified shares. Again, I know this is kind of challenging to see, but it, that should have all units within the county that are, that are affected. And our last set of impacts is with local income tax for public safety and for economic development. These are only received by the county and the towns and cities. So in this case, Towneville would, would see the effects. In public safety, they would see about a $62,000 increase from '25 to '27. And then in economic development, that's the bottom chart, be about a, just under a $400,000 increase. One thing I, I will say, if you have any questions about the legislation going through, Jeff Bellamy has got all the answers, so feel free to ask him all those questions. Thanks, Reagan. Before we go to the Q and A, we've only had two people asked to speak. The first one is Dr. Schaefer.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Schaefer. I'm the superintendent for Towneville Community School Corporation, 204th Way here in Towneville, Indiana. And with me this evening also is our CFO, Mr. Corey Herbert. And appreciate the opportunity to address the councils here, and just want to thank you for the opportunity to, to speak, and also appreciate Chief Duncan coming out and speaking with us here a few weeks ago, just talking a little bit about the process and what some of the estimated impact is. My purpose this evening is really to share some of the baseline results that we received actually just today, this afternoon, from an independent circuit breaker impact study that was conducted by Policy Analytics out of Indianapolis. They do a lot of tax projections, a lot of taxing impact work, and have done a lot of schoolwork and a lot of other municipality work as well. I want to begin, though, by saying, I generally support the concept of a fire territory, but we need to collectively understand the real financial impacts to all units. I, I think I sent copies of our report out, both to Township Board and to the council. I know you haven't had a chance to digest that yet, and we haven't had a lot of time either, but want to just point out some of the highlights of that study for consideration. If you look at the Policy Analytics study, that would show for us, and Mr. Herbert has hard copies of that if you want to take a look. I'm just going to hit some very high points of this, mostly from the first couple of What you'll see is you have an opportunity to look at that, that the estimated impact for the school district is $1.3 million, whereas the REEDY Financial study was approximately $372,000 of additional circuit breaker impact based on our net levy. And the studies, as we understand it, were based on the same basic information. We also understand modeling can be done differently, so we want to begin to understand those differences as well. And just to hit a summary of the findings, there were, there were four, and I believe those are on page two. By 2026, with the proposed fire territory, based on the Policy Analytics study, approximately 80 percent of taxpayers within the, the affected district, that taxing area would, would be pushed to circuit breaker. Right now, our numbers show us that about 36 percent of taxpayers in that area are at circuit breaker, would push it to 80 based on the Policy Analytics study. Secondly, it would result in a net increase in certified levy of approximately $4.3 million that would be payable in 2026. That would be the, the net certified levy increase. This modeling shows of that, approximately $1 million or 25 percent of that levy increase would be paid by the taxpayers, presumably those who would still be below the circuit breaker, making up the majority of that difference. The remainder, the 75 percent remainder of that increase of $4.3 million would be from reallocations from the overlapping units, which would include certainly the school district, library, et cetera, et cetera, of the overlapping units, making those up in circuit breaker credits. Approximately 40 percent of that impact, that remaining 75 percent, or roughly $3 million, 40 percent of the impact of the overlapping units would fall on the school corporation with an estimated impact of 1.3 million in 2026. That 1.3 million for us comes out of our operations budget. Now, there's a range of numbers to be better understood. We understand that. Just to give you a little bit of illustration of the real impact potential to the district, if I take the $372,000 that was in the REEDY study, that would be the additional circuit breaker impact, that represents about 9 percent of our current operations levy. To put that in real numbers, that would pay for all of our property casualty insurance, premium costs, or all of our bus servicing costs for a year, or all of our police force costs for a year. If that impact was to reach 1.3 million, as per the Policy Analytics study, that's approximately 33 percent of our operations levy, which would represent all of our bus driver personnel costs, or all of our utility costs for the entire district, or all three of the costs I previously mentioned, which were the property casualty, bus servicing, and police unit costs added together. So a few questions we have that we would like to get answered here over the next couple of weeks, is to have a deeper conversation to understand the differences in the reports. And we have already reached out to the county, and we're going to reach out to bond council to get some additional answers on how some of this impacts. We want to better understand how the lit increased distributions to the units are calculated for 2027, and I know some of that was, was just reviewed a little bit, which was helpful. And another question we have is what happens in the near future when a new firehouse needs to be built? We know that's going to need to happen, and for, for very good reasons, but how is that financed? How will that further increase any potential circuit breaker impact due to potential additional town or township levy needs? Perhaps that's answered by some of the lit revenue, but again, we want to better understand that. And lastly, in light of some of the unknown legislative budgets right now, in the Senate and in the House moving through, looking that direction, what is the timeline for these governing bodies to make a decision on the fire territory? Does that still remain here being in the spring? So those are our basic questions that we would like to get more information on here as we move through the next few days and weeks, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to, to share the information with you this evening. Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Dr. Schaefer. When we sat down on January 8th with Dr. Schaefer, he assured me that we would have time, after he got his study done, that we could compare numbers, and that the financial, REEDY Financial that we hired could sit down and talk with his financial people. I received Dr. Schaefer's numbers one hour before this meeting. I can tell you, we're not going to comment anything on any of these numbers. REEDY Financial has the contact for the people that did the, the study for the school. I'm sure somewhere in there, there's a happy medium. I can't validate any of those numbers or give you any answers to those numbers. I just want to head that off before the question and answer session, so. Do we have any questions? Could you come up, sir, because we need you on camera? Okay, the question is, is, he wanted to know, he lives in Marion Township, wants to know how Marion Township is affected. They, they are not affected at all. Marion Township is contracted, contracts with the town of Towneville for $30,000 a year for 117 runs that we did in 2024. We're still going to provide this service there. I'll tell you, sir, the way it affects you right now, 35 percent of the time, this firehouse that's closest to where you live has to shut down because we can't afford it. So that means your first service is coming from the other side of program. That's exactly how it affects you, and that's the matter of life and death that I'm talking about. Any other questions? I want to do that as a separate meeting, I want to keep it separate. There's, there's too many variables. When you talk about bonds and interest rates and, and the credit rating and, and how we end up doing that, that's farther down the road. We have five years to figure that out right now because of the, the conditions we have at the firehouse here, and that what we will refer to as temporary housing. So for the people to say, you know, why would you put a firehouse there? That's, that firehouse has been there since before Mark Morgan was born. So it's been there for a long time, nothing's changed, it's just we're staffing it to provide better service to the west end of town. So anybody that wants to talk to me about locations of the firehouse and what's the best interest, or because of the whole Miles Farm thing, pick up the phone, give me a call, I'll meet you for coffee, come to the office, whatever you want to do. I'm completely transparent about this, and we are numbers-driven, and I can't build a firehouse in New Winchester because that's not my area, because tomorrow it could change. They could give their money to, to AMO, Coatsville, or anyone else to provide that fire protection for them, so. But yeah, just pick up the phone, 317-745-4180, extension 9001 is my office. Like I said, I'll meet you for coffee, whatever you want to do, and we'll, we'll talk, and I'll show you all the numbers. The Center Township Board is asking if there's enough money in this budget to fund the firehouse. Well, without having all those numbers, I can't answer that question. So we don't even know what it's going to cost yet, right? Based upon $10 million, we're figuring it'd be about 8 and 1/2 to 9 cents per 100, if we were to bond it throughout, depending on where you bond it, right? Because do you bond all of Center Township? Do you bond the town? How does that look like? That's an agreement that the, that the two entities have to come to. It's just not really a realistic number that I could say it's going to cost that. Right now, we have it set up with a lease program that we will be able to lease the vehicles we need to replace our frontline equipment immediately. Of course, we're waiting for legislation before we make any moves for that, and after the territory hopefully gets through, but that will eat up the bulk of, of the capital fund. So we're going to have to figure it out, but I don't have a true answer. There's just no way to do it. You know, we, I, I got it for free from an architect to give us a kind of a rendering of what it might look like where it's at, not even close to where we wanted to do it, but it was for free, and that normally costs 75,000, so I saved you taxpayer's money, 75,000 on that. But we're, we're just trying to do the right thing, and I wish I had a solid answer for you. I just know everybody else is building firehouses, you know, they're breaking ground out here in Avon with another firehouse, Plainfield's getting ready to break ground on another firehouse. So, I mean, it can be done, right? It's not, it's not as dramatic as it seems. I don't have all those answers without having solid numbers. I wish I could answer that for you. But as soon as I get it, I will tell you, and I'll put it on Facebook, I promise. And again, this is, building a firehouse is separate from the fire territory. Yes, sir? Yes, sir? He asked if this presentation was included in the QR code, and I said yes. Sorry. And again, if you have any questions, you get home, week from now, whatever, think about something, pick up the phone, give me a call, I'd be more than happy to, to talk to you on the phone, or like I said, meet you somewhere, and we could show you everything we got. Completely transparent here, we're not trying to do anything except for better protect you, and, and 8 and 1/2 minutes, sir, to get to your house if you're having a heart attack, that's not going to work. So that scares me, keeps me up at night. So I thank you for your time, if there's no other questions.